Yes, to observe and to listen. In compliance with the State Governing Code on open meetings, documentation of these proceedings will become part of the Tyler ISD permanent legal record. In order to ensure accuracy, please refrain from talking while our speakers are speaking, and turn off cell phones, okay, and other electronic devices. The Board, the Superintendent, and I are pleased that you have joined us as we celebrate success, review information, and make policy decisions related to student achievement and the effective operation of the Tyler ISD public schools. And at this time, we are going into our discussion items. We have a demographic study update to be presented, and the Board is going to go down to the tables so we'll be able to observe, alright?
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Crawford. I'd like to introduce our demographers. Stacy Tapera is right there, and Justin Solhavy.
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 Yeah.
Okay. I didn't think I was going to get that right.
I don't expect anyone to.
Okay. Anyway, we're excited to have you guys here, and we're ready to kind of go through the report, and I'll turn the meeting over to you guys.
Okay, this is on, great. Well, we'll kind of give this presentation in two parts. So, the district has asked us to present to you our findings and the latest demographic study. I believe the last one was 2015, 2015-16 school year. So, it's been a while, and there've been some new developments that have come up since then, and some other changes as well. So, I'm going to jump right in, and just real briefly, who we are. We have almost a 40-year history of working with school districts in Texas, mostly high-growth school districts and urban districts as well, like yours. So, we're based in College Station, and we basically put together 10-year planning reports, just like this one that you'll be given. We have a large binder with everything we found out, a lot of different demographic statistics and housing analyses. So, they're in the back right now. We'll actually give those to you later. We've got some large maps, because what we do also, as many of you know, we map the entire school district out. We need to know what's happening everywhere, and I'll get into that later. But you guys have some large maps that we'll be distributing later as well, very useful and helpful. So, I'd like to get started with a little bit of a data piece here, and this is coming from the U.S. Census Bureau. This just shows you the population change and the pieces of each change, components, if you will. And that gray background, gray line there, shows you Smith County's population change annually. And you can see that last line for 2018, the estimate is that there were 2,700 new people living in Smith County in 2018 compared to a year prior, in 2017. So, that's about what the county grows at on average every year. So, that kind of, of course, gives you a feeling of where we're at. Most of the growth is domestic, meaning other people are moving in from other areas outside Tyler or Smith County. But that red line is actually your natural growth line, so you take your births minus your deaths. So, you have a very large percentage of your growth that's actually a natural increase. And the orange line is international migration, the smallest portion of your growth here in Smith. So, we also like to compare you guys against other districts, and this is, these are always popular maps to look at. Of course, you're the largest district in the region with over 18,000 students. And in numeric change, looking at a one-year change, you've grown over 100 students in the last year. Hallsville is number one up there, but that's really not true. They added their virtual campus, so all of those students, it's over 4,000 students, are being, they're considered students of Hallsville ISD even though they come from all over the state of Texas.
They live everywhere else, just remotely.
Yeah. We're having to explain that all over the state this year because of this anomaly. Looking at that percentage change, of course, since you're a large district, it's a low percent change compared to some of these other districts ignoring Hallsville again, that actually show a much bigger percent changes because they have such small enrollments. Numerically, over a five-year period, I find this more interesting personally. We're looking at 100 students added in Tyler, putting you guys 12th in the area, or 11th really, if you take away Hallsville. But some of your neighbors grow a little bit higher numbers, including Lyndale and Bullard and White House, just outside of Tyler. When you look at the percent change, again, it's relatively low because of your large enrollment. Now, there are certain quality of life factors that we have to consider. This is why people move around. One of them is what we, of course, the economically disadvantaged population, which is essentially your free and reduced lunch population. And so, that is higher in Tyler. It's almost about what the state averages, though. It's a little bit above, but it ranks you lower in terms of some of your neighboring districts. So, this is one reason we see some of the movement at times to other areas. Now, looking since the 1990s, going back to 1991, most of us probably weren't around here then, or at least, you know, working with the district. But if you were, you remember some of these ups and downs, and I really want to kind of just start here in the 2000s. Around 2003, 2004, you guys were seeing substantial growth. And then, the national economy kind of tanked in '07. And so, we started seeing a decline everywhere really in enrollment for two or three years. But around the turn of this decade, we started seeing high growth in charter schools. And so, a lot of the decline has kind of continued, and it's really stabilized at this point over the last three to four years, as there hasn't been as much growth in charters in the last couple of years, but it's still there, and it's taking place this year, as I'll get to in a moment. We compile a lot of different demographic information. As I mentioned, it's in the report. You can spend hours reading it. One highlight on this slide I really want to point out is the median age. And as you know, you've heard, you know, you guys are becoming kind of a little more of a Mecca for retirees. Your median age right now, according to the Census, is 35.7. Well, 10 years ago, that number was below 34 years. So, you've increased in age, on average, two years, basically, in the last decade. So, we have to consider all these things, because the typical age that a family will have children is, it's increasing in the last decade. That's risen. But also, your median age is increasing as well. So, that's all a factor in the number of births we have and the number of new students in the district. Overall, a lot of your demographic characteristics are more in line with the state. Some are lower, some are higher, but that was the big one I wanted to point out. So, I mentioned births, and the kindergarten population is in blue there, going back to 2003. And the dotted blue line hasn't happened yet, so we only have data from last fall, last school year. Well, if we align the birth line, which is that red line there, and that data comes from the State Health Department, and what we do is we take only mothers who live in Tyler ISD, and we chart that. That line really mirrors the kindergarten line, it's just higher. And the reason it's higher than the kindergarten line is because you have transfers into private schools and charter schools. So, you're never going to get the same number of people who were born actually in kindergarten. But this line can gauge what the future might hold, and really, it's up and down. There are a couple of waves here you can see in the next couple of years where it goes up and down again, and we're seeing that in the kindergarten enrollment as well. It's staying somewhat stable. You might have one year where it's higher than another, though. When we look at the actual number of students who are living in this district and attending the schools here, we come up with a number of just about 82%. So, you're catching about 82, 81.9% of the resident K-12 students. Well, actually, these are all students. So, we've taken out transfers into the district from other school districts, such as Bullard or nearby districts. And then, we've thrown in what we estimate the charter school population to be based on TEA data and our surveys, and I'll get into that in a minute, and our surveys of private schools. And we also have to include transfers to other school districts nearby. So, when you put all that together, about 16% or so are attending charter and private schools, another 2% in nearby districts. So, we get about 18% of your population going elsewhere. So, I wanted to kind of focus on charter schools for a second. What we found in the last few years of some of our research is that charter schools tend to enroll students within about a three-to-four mile radius of the campus, at least the bulk of the students. We know some people are going to travel a far way, but the bulk attend campuses near their home. And of course, most of the charter campuses are in the central and southeast portion of Tyler. If they're not in the district, they're within a couple of miles. So, they're still pulling students from your area. These campuses highlighted here are all in the report, and we've shown enrollment or estimated enrollments from last year's TEA PMS data or our surveys of the district. And we've also put projections for five years out. We know one campus, Tyler Classical, is adding on over 20 classrooms at this time. Most of that growth is going to be a little long-term in the upper grades. They've really maxed out their K-through-six population. They might add a kindergarten or a second-grade classroom, but most of the growth will just be filling those upper grades in Tyler Classical over the next five years. So, all of that is factored into our projections as well. And of course, we don't usually see growth in an area unless we have job growth and employment growth. So, right now, employment's pretty high, and this is really a rolling average, it's a moving average of six months. So, we've taken six months of data of employment change here and charted that since 2012. And what you can see is that really since 2016, Tyler has seen very steady growth, and it's been usually between .5 and 1% of employment growth. So, that's been very steady. You also have here a chart showing where everyone's working, what industries. And mostly, it's pretty diverse. Your big one is healthcare and education, no surprise to me, just because of the amount of hospitals, since Tyler's a hub for healthcare, and also education with UT and other big colleges here as well. You do have quite a bit higher construction and manufacturing percentage, but it's really nothing that alarms me or anything that stands out too much. I mentioned that employment earlier, and the unemployment right now is about 2.8%. We know it's historic lows right now everywhere, nationally, statewide. So, that right now is really driving a lot of growth everywhere, not different here than anywhere else. But you do have a couple of big projects that have recently been completed, right? And so, a lot of those are happening north of the district, and I mentioned them here. GG Distribution added almost 200 jobs up in Winona ISD. They converted an old post office building into their manufacturing hub. John Souls has expanded a little bit, and also, they're paying their employees more, from what I've been hearing, because of the Sanderson Farms relocation here, or location here, which has added 1,000 workers almost, and another 500 additional jobs are expected in the next year. So, that's all happening north of the district, and not necessarily having a big effect on housing yet, but we have to consider that over time, people are going to start working there more long-term. I'm sure this big push of jobs is going to have a turnover right away, as people find their place in the company or decide to stay or leave. But over time, we expect more people to maybe want to live a little closer to the plant. So, we haven't forgotten about adding new housing and population north of Tyler proper. We can't forget about that. And I mentioned the medical and healthcare sector as your largest sector earlier. These are just a couple of highlights showing that the two top employers are, of course, UT and Christus. But I highlighted two other companies here, Fresenius and Centene, both located along Earl Campbell. And so, Fresenius, with nearly 300 employees, they're planning to expand and add about 200 positions. I'm not quite sure when that's going to happen, but we've been told it will eventually. And Centene opened, of course, a few years ago. They're expected to expand in the region as well, since they are covering a lot of Medicare and Medicare claims. So, their industry's growing ever since the Affordable Healthcare Act was established. So, we're expecting these two companies to continue expanding over time, and so that'll just further your medical and healthcare growth. Now, the next couple of slides really just show somewhat of our housing methodology, because as I move from employee, employment to housing, housing, of course, is an effect of employment in many ways, but this dictates where people will be living and which schools will be affected in general. So, we break the district up into all these hundreds of geographies, and they're based on your attendance zones, they follow major roadways, and they're really inclusive of subdivisions for the most part. We want to make sure we know where every, all the new students are projected in very small geographies, so that we can project for campuses. So, we overlay those planning units on everything that we do. This map here shows the jurisdictions that cover Tyler, Noonday, and Tyler. Those are your two cities. But I highlighted here a new municipal utility district as well. So, we also look into utilities, because you can't have housing growth without water and sewer. So, that orange hatch line was a new municipal utility district created by the legislature. Smith County and the city of Tyler were both proponents of this MUD down in the south portion of your district. And so, over time, this area is likely to have more development. It's been stymied a bit due to a private utility company that really has a monopoly in the area. So, we expect, we don't expect it right away, but this MUD will likely start improving infrastructure over time. I've already been told they have plans for this in the next year. So, as that gets going and ramping up, we have projected for more housing growth in the south over the 10-year period. One other thing we look at in terms of land development is who owns what land and where, and what's been selling. And so, every blue land tract you see here, we've just highlighted them, the district's so large, we can't label them on this map, but all of them are labeled, and you can dig further in the report. Every blue land tract is a recent change in ownership since our last study. Sometimes, it may not be a direct change in ownership, more of an indirect. But the red land tracts are tracts that are for sale in one of our national databases. But we look even further than these red tracts. We actually interview the cities and find out, you know, who actually might be wanting to sell land, who's putting it on the market, but it may not actually be up for sale. You may not see a sign in front of some of these properties. The big red spot you see there, just to our west, is the Bellwood Tract. It's over 500 acres. It sits on the loop. So, it's up for sale, and it's really being marketed more heavily in the last year than it has been in the past. So, we do expect that to develop, but at this time, we don't have any firm details on exactly what would go in first or when. So, we've been very conservative on that over the long term. I mentioned the Rose City MUD as a new utility district, so that's one infrastructure project that is coming up. Typically, MUDs pay for their infrastructure by issuing bonds. I know these are more familiar in places like Austin, Houston, and San Antonio, but that's generally what happens, and then, as time moves on, folks move into new developments, and they end up paying for this, for this infrastructure. So, development is likely to increase there. We do have one road rehabilitation. I believe it's in front of Owens Elementary right now. We know about that. And then, of course, not necessarily directly affecting your district, but Toll 49 is, I believe it's controversial, being expanded to the northeast through the White House School District. So, that's something to think about. And one thing's for sure, there's been more land transactions along the tollway lately, based on our map. So, people are looking at that area now as a possibility of moving forward, not in the short term, but in the long term. So, in terms of housing, really, your hotspot, and this is no surprise to anyone, is the 2493 Old Jacksonville Courtyard. This is where most of your developments, at least your new ones, are springing up, but it's not the only spot. I'm not, I'll go over these in a minute on our next slide, but I did want to talk about some of these other bullet points. If you look west, out west by Lindsay Park off Greenbrier Road, there's a new development that's now in the first initial phase of construction. They're putting in utilities for Lindsay Crossing. So, the first section is only about 30 lots, but right now, they've platted over 150 for this particular area. More land is owned. It's a Huckabee car tract. And another development that has recently gained approval from the city of Tyler, it's a mixed-use development. It's been on the books for a long time at Cumberland and South Broadway. So, this is expected to generate a couple of multifamily tracts that could sell off over the 10-year period. It's mostly going to be commercial, fronting South Broadway, but they've reserved some land in the back of the development for multifamily townhome development. And I mentioned this earlier, but the north part of the district can't be forgotten. We don't have those big developments that happen like in the south, you know, in bulk, but we have a lot of permitting activity that occurs there, and in the report, you can see some of that. We've geocoded permits from the county and the city, showing where a lot of that growth is. And the next-
Can you come back for a minute?
Yeah.
I see you said North TISD scattered, you didn't say anything about that.
Right. So, as I get into the next map, I will. Kind of a segue for you there. So, one thing, the next two maps, actually, are going to show you by planning unit where we've projected growth. So, those colors represent the number of new homes. These don't represent students, but they represent new homes. So, the red, of course, these are our big developments that, you know, we've been highlighting along Jacksonville. So, I mentioned Lindsay Crossing out here along Greenbrier, and it's nearby the Cascades to the west. But these developments that are all happening along Old Jacksonville are really where the bulk of our student growth is going to occur, and Stacy will get into that later. Some of these don't have, they don't really generate many students, like the Crossing. It's really oriented to older folks, retirees. But some of these, like Cumberland Gap around Jack Elementary, they do. That area around Cumberland Gap, those subdivisions, actually generate the most number of students in your entire district, really. So, that's in terms of the number of students per home. Yeah, very densely populated with students. We have another new development that really recently broke ground, Oak Creek. It's on the west side of Jacksonville. And then, the Gin Cove development, which I know a lot, it's been in the news a lot lately.
Is it?
Yeah, right? 400, over 400 acres. Both owners have recently gotten the zoning changes approved, at least for the majority of the tracts. So, they're moving forward with mostly single-family and townhome development along West Cumberland, so north of Jack Elementary. And I mentioned that north area, and that's what I'm going to get into right now. So, this is looking in the short term, five years. You can see most of the growth projected is in these, you know, denser developments in the south. But when you look holistically 10 years, we have to project forward thinking, you know, not knowing what's going to happen, taking what we know today and moving forward, knowing who owns the land, what's been conceptualized. You don't see any red up here in the north, but I highlighted it because we're seeing a lot of growth in permitting in large lot manufactured homes along, especially some of the major highways moving northward toward 20. So, these are where you actually have even denser student populations as well. So, even though you don't see the reds, you still are seeing student growth up here, and Stacy will get into that a little more. A lot of that's really, it also, there's a juxtaposition. You have student growth happening because of new housing, but you also have student trends occurring in the area, grade groups getting smaller, grade groups getting larger. I'm going to let Stacy handle that one. But the bulk of our new housing, which, as I mentioned, a lot of it's not student-oriented, is, of course, in the south. And you can see here, looking 10 years out, we've projected a little more for the far-south part of the district, knowing that that Rose City MUD is going to get kick-started, and we might see more infrastructure improvements headed that way. In terms of multifamily housing, really, most of it's concentrated in the south part of the district. These two red spots are what we're convinced are going to be the most likely spots in the short term for new multifamily. One of these is already under construction. In fact, I believe about 20 units are already occupied. The Auberge, it's on Grand. So, this will have some students. There are quite a few two-bedroom units in that property. The Cumberland Park 86 acres I mentioned, that will likely have some multifamily component as well. Other than that, it's really kind of a wait-and-see. We know of a couple of other developments that have recently been approved by the city along Walton, another one out west. I can't exactly remember. I think it's on Highway 31. It's questionable as to when they'll actually get going, but we have had some development interest. Oh, also, not to be forgotten, in Noonday, there's a new project. It's a tax credit housing project, about 50 units, but it's for, it's age-restricted, so you're going to just have 55-plus folks living there. There may be a few students because it's preferred age restriction, but I don't think there'll be too many. There is another tax credit property, if you've heard, by the way, that has seeked, or they've put in an application for this year. I believe the road is Deerwood, or it's next to Deerwood Apartments, right in the corner of the district in the southeast. It's also for senior housing.
Oh, sure. Do you feel so much?
So, in terms of total housing units projected over the 10-year, we're looking at just about 9,000 units, and this runs the gamut of anything from a single-family home to a manufactured mobile home park to an apartment building. So, you can see the bulk of that, over half, is in single-family housing across the district. Over 2,500 apartment complex units are projected throughout the district. And you can see, we've increased the projection over time. So, the first half of the period is in blue, but the red line is everything from 2023 to 2028, the latter half. And so, we think you'll actually see more growth, as long as the economy continues trekking along like it is today. We're projecting more growth as we have more developers planning projects farther south, and again, the Rose City MUD could actually create more housing farther south and everywhere else in the district. So, when we look at how many students are actually living in all these apartment units and single-family homes we're projecting, this is where you can really get into the nitty-gritty, but it matters. So, overall, district-wide, you have a .39 average of how many students are living in each house, and these are occupied homes. But you have some neighborhoods, like I mentioned, around Jack Elementary, that actually have a .6, so 60 students per 100 homes. A lot of your neighborhoods, like the Crossing, you don't have that many. It's more oriented to older folks, as I mentioned. So, it really matters what development you're looking at, and we do, we have to actually pinpoint that by subdivision as we project. Your multifamily's the same way. You have some that are higher yield, student yields, but overall, it's .2 students per home in the district. A lot of people think, oh, there's one kid per home, but that's never the case, and in your district, it's even lower, just because the age of your district's older, and you have a lot of transfers. Now, when we put all of this together, we create a moderate growth scenario and a low and a high. This is showing our moderate growth scenario at snapshot date of each school year. So, we're not talking about in two weeks. We're talking about the end of October every year. We know that you gain enrollment from the beginning of school year to October, so don't forget that. The first three years, you're going to see growth here, and that's because we're projecting higher growth in the pre-K due to the full-day pre-K program. This is still a gamble. We don't quite know how many you're going to have on day one- We don't quite know how many you're going to have on day one. We don't know which year you're going to see more pre-K growth. Generally, what we see when districts switch over from half-day to full-day or some sort of programmatic change, it takes a couple of years for people to realize it's happening or to get their ducks in a row. Some families may not even realize yet that you guys are going to offer full day, no matter how many flyers you throw out there, you're going to miss people. So we're projecting the first couple of years to see growth, and a lot of that's from pre-K. Over time, we're projecting that to level out, and, you know, you may see some years where you don't have much growth, and that's because you have maybe larger populations in the older upper grades, and those are shifting out of the district. So we've factored in all of what we talked about, our charter school projections, our housing projections, our economic forecasting, and we've put that into a moderate-growth, most-likely scenario. And just remember, we're also very conservative. We don't, even if a developer tells us they're going to build a thousand homes in ten years, we never believe that. We assume it's going to be lower. It always is. It takes time to kick-start developments. So when we put in our low and high-growth scenarios on a chart, you can see which scenario we kind of lean more toward. Every district's going to be different, and in yours, we have a low growth that has a much bigger gap from the moderate growth. That's because we believe there are more reasons for lower growth to occur. We just don't know if that will actually happen over time. So you can see that this gap widens as the ten years moves on. So a lower-growth scenario could mean you have another large charter system move into the school district into Smith County. We know that school systems like IDEA, which is based in the Rio Grande Valley, other systems like International Leadership have been expanding rapidly. And IDEA has very pronounced expansion plans, but we don't know of any in this area yet. So, but we don't know that. That could change in two years. So we have to kind of factor that in. So we've assumed that under the moderate-growth scenario, you'll continue to lose twenty to forty students annually on average to charters, but under that low-growth scenario, you could be looking at more like seventy, you know, fifty to seventy-five on average annually. You could also have a development that slows down, or the economy slows down over time. You know, that employment rate, unemployment rate may not, it's not going to stay low forever. We know that. The high-growth scenario assumes you might have a large land tract that gets going with development. Maybe that Bellwood tract sells to a developer sooner rather than later. Maybe a couple of more apartment complexes for the general population, not just seniors moves into the district over time. So there are a lot of different reasons that can affect this, but this is your best bet, and we always tell districts to kind of follow the moderate growth. And with that pre-K enrollment in flux right now, you're going to kind of want to look at those first few years, and you'll know as the next few weeks move on how many students are going to be enrolling in your pre-K program this year versus next. So with that, then Stacy takes all of this, and I'm going to have her kind of continue with how this affects your schools and your campus.
Thank you. So again, you've heard a lot of information about all of the different factors that have gone into these projections, and now we're going to look at where the students are projected to live, not just from new housing, but also the impacts of the planned charter expansions, the pre-K full-day, and as Justin alluded to, the aging of the current students impacts future years, because if there's a small third-grade population at one particular school, as, you know, three years later, as those kids are going into middle school, then that's going to be a smaller, then there will be a smaller growth or maybe even a decline at the middle school three years later as that small class ages through. And so particularly in the north, where the growth due to new housing is projected, it is in many cases offset by existing small, younger classes. And so as those classes age through, then that looks like, that offsets the growth that might be happening with a new apartment coming in or a new development. So again, this is a hotspot map like you've seen before, but these represent students. And the names of the developments are all familiar to you, I'm sure, but I'm going to take those names off so that you can just think about visually the colors, because we're going to look at a lot of maps and think about where these hotspots are located. So the first question is, we're going to look at elementary schools first. So where are, which elementary schools are impacted by this growth? Well, these sort of purple outlines are the elementary boundaries, and so this hotspot of growth here around Old Jacksonville Road, of course, is in the Jack Elementary Zone, and this hotspot of growth on the west side is in the Jones Attendance Zone. Even though Jones is up here in the corner, the Attendance Zone reaches all the way down here west. And so those are the, that's the foreshadowing as to where we're going to be looking in a few minutes about overcrowding, future overcrowding at schools. This map shows you by color the hotspots of utilization right now, or last October. Now, it's really important to emphasize that this is the number of resident students living in each Attendance Zone compared to the number of students that can be accommodated at each school, the capacity of those schools. That does not mean that Pete is operating currently at over a hundred and ten percent capacity because it's red. It means that there are enough students living in the Pete Attendance Zone that if all of them went to Pete, then it would be operating at a hundred and ten percent. So this is a little bit misleading, but the reason we do this is because we, as demographers, project where people are going to live. We can't project where you're going to put a special program or where students are going to transfer in and out. And so the importance of this map is not to say, oh, we have a problem at Pete and Rami and Orr because they are red and orange, because in reality, those schools have a net of about a hundred students transferring out and going to other campuses. Almost all of these schools have a significant number of students transferring out into Caldwell and the Early Learning Center and so forth. So all of those kids are counted in these numbers at their home campus, even though they're attending other schools.
Isn't it true, as you look at Highway sixty-nine, looking up north?
Highway sixty-nine and Loop Forty-nine, that's deeper in, isn't that Lindell ISD? That's Dilla? Really? Really?
That's impressive.
It's a big district. So the relevance of this map is when you compare it to the next map. This is right now where students live compared to where the capacity is, and now you're going to see where students are projected to live compared to the capacity. And so you notice that Pete and Rami and Orr are still orange and still slightly overcrowded, but they're not any worse because the high growth is not projected in that area. But importantly, they're also adjacent to some underutilized schools. The focus of this map is to illustrate in red, the Jack Attendance Zone and the Jones Attendance Zone are projected to be the most overutilized in ten years, and that corresponds with the red hotspots that we saw earlier for student growth. Now, some people are picture learners and some people are numbers learners, so the same information is now presented in table format. This is the number of resident students we project to live in each of these attendance zones each year, and the yellow indicates the year that the resident population is projected to be about ninety percent or greater of the capacity. The light orange is a hundred percent capacity, and the dark orange is a hundred and ten percent capacity. So as I mentioned earlier, let's look at Pete. Oh, no, go back. Wrong button. I'll use this one. So Pete looks like it's a hundred, over a hundred and ten percent capacity, but remember, there are a hundred students transferring out and going somewhere else. So this doesn't concern me because this doesn't, isn't growing a whole lot. And so the growth is where my attention lies, going from yellow to light orange to dark orange in Jones and Jack, which is what I outlined on the map just a few minutes ago.
So what are you accrediting the increase for Jones, that other development?
Yes, so this, which is Lindsay Crossing and the future Bellwood Track, and there's another one too.
Cascades is in that Attendance Zone as well, but they usually don't generate as many students in those homes, but there are quite a few developments occurring.
So if we, if we look at this area of red and orange, the overcrowding at Jones and Jack lends itself to this area of the district being a potential for another new elementary sometime in the next ten years. It could pull students from Jones, it could pull students from Jack, as well as some redistribution here in the crowded, in the crowded, more urban parts of the district, as well as some redistribution to Birdwell and Austin, et cetera. So this purple outline represents a catchment area of where a new elementary school could be utilized. It's very important to understand, especially for the press, that these are not Attendance Zones. Nobody has made any decisions about if a school will be built, or where it will go, or when it will open, or who will attend it. This is the first time the board has seen this, and no decisions have been made about anything.
Thank you for that disclaimer.
This is PASA's professional opinion about what you might start thinking about for the next ten years. So if a new elementary could be built somewhere in this purple area, it could pull some, this portion is pulled from Jack and this portion is pulled from Jones, and then there's also some possibilities for some redistribution in here, as I mentioned earlier, such that you notice that this map looks very boring, but it doesn't have any orange or red on it, right? That was done on purpose because it better utilizes your existing facilities in order to avoid having to overbuild or build schools that are unnecessary. So if there are not any more questions about elementary, I'll move on to middle school.
Just a clarification.
Sure.
These, if T I S D is averaging eighty-one percent of...
Averaging eighty-one percent of resident students attending T I S D, that doesn't include this nineteen percent, that if they change their patterns, then that impacts this as well, right?
That's correct. That's correct. So that could be one of the factors that would make the district follow the high-growth scenario rather than the moderate growth. These are all moderate-growth numbers, but yes, if there is a big impact that draws students back from charter schools and private schools to T I S D, then yes, you could be following the high-growth scenario.
Worst-case scenario would be one of these large systems shuts down overnight, and I've seen it happen, but generally, it happens to very low-performing charter systems. And I'm not expecting that to happen here. I haven't heard of anything that would lead to that, but that's generally where we see some.
And he says worst-case only because that would dump five hundred students in one month on a combination of maybe two schools. Okay, so let's move on to middle schools. Again, we're looking at the hotspots that we saw earlier, but these are overlaid with the middle school attendance zones. And so both of the major hotspots that we've talked about fall in the Three Lakes Attendance Zone. Again, there are some hotspots up in Bolter as well as Moore, and those are from a combination of what we have been talking about, but also, but largely, that's offset by the aging of the current student population into the middle school grades. So if we look at the current utilization, again, these are resident students compared to capacity, so this doesn't take into account all the students transferring around. Bolter is the most overcrowded by resident students, but again, we compare to ten years forward, and all of the growth is projected in Three Lakes, and there's actually a slight decline in population projected in Bolter because, again, of this aging of the smaller elementary populations in that area. So what to do about the future utilization of middle schools is a little bit less clear-cut than the elementaries, but there has been discussion for as long as I can remember, and I've been around for, how long has it been? Ten years, twelve years, working in this? Okay.
Fifteen.
Okay. Time flies. So for many years, there's been discussion about what to do about the HOG Middle School Campus, and its importance to the community and its historical significance is a big factor, but it's a very old campus, and it's also less than half the size of all of the other middle school campuses. And so one possibility that the district might consider, again, no decisions have been made, is to repurpose HOG Middle School for some other purpose, and to build a new and larger middle school somewhere, again, on this western side, such that it can pull some students from Three Lakes and pull some students from Bolter as well, and then the current HOG Attendance Zone can be distributed among, in thousands of different combinations. But in the case that we've drawn here, a new middle school here on the west could pull some of HOG as well as some of Bolter, and this is some of, a tiny bit of HOG going to Bolter and much going to Moore and some going to Three Lakes as well. So again, this, there are thousands of ways that this can be done if a new middle school is built on the west side. But one more time, I'm going to have you notice that there is no orange or red on this map. There is no overcrowding at these campuses. And so effectively, a new, larger middle school replacing the capacity that's currently used for middle school at HOG would be a net increase of about six hundred students, which would handle the projected middle school population through the end of this ten years and beyond. Are there any questions about middle school? Okay, well, let's just briefly talk about high school, which needs very little discussion because the district has done a fabulous job of building these spectacular new comprehensive high schools with the idea that this will handle all of the projected student growth for the next half a century or so. And so the only decisions facing the district at this point regarding high school are out of our purview. They're not demographic in nature, they're more programmatic. What are you going, where are you going to put programs and how are you going to pull students from each of the two comprehensive campuses and so forth? And so at that, we sort of bow out because that's, we're not education people, that's not our expertise, but the capacity that you have is certainly adequate for the projected future student population. And so to summarize what we've said, sometime in the next ten years, the district could use one elementary school on the west side. One possibility for the middle school would be a new middle school on the west side and repurposing HOG for another purpose. And the timing of all of this is dependent on a number of factors. Primarily, it's dependent on the local tolerance for overcrowding. We have some clients who will push their capacities to a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five, sometimes a hundred and thirty percent utilization, but I know that the history that this district has with portables is more of a hate than a love-hate relationship. And so therefore, that's why the data that we have outlined shows you when you're creeping up on ninety percent utilization and then a hundred up on ninety percent utilization, and then a hundred percent, and then a hundred and ten percent. And so, the question of timing really boils down to, how much overcrowding is this community willing to tolerate before a new school is funded? And then, there are always programmatic decisions that are non-demographic in nature as well, as well as bond election cycles and finance stuff that is also outside of our purview. So I will leave it at that, and turn it over to you guys for any questions.
Board members, do you have any questions? Any comments? Dr. Crawford?
I think on the last slide that you showed of the high schools, I know there was a lot of chatter in the community about reasons, and et cetera, on when we redrew the boundaries, and I think PASA's research kind of confirms what we did in-house, there's a pretty good balance there between both JT and Lee. Now, that's not what's exactly going to both of those schools. Obviously, you've got early college high school, and you've got Rise Academy as well, some of those programmatic decisions that have been made here locally. But I will say that I think that some of the hard work that staff did in redrawing that was spot-on, as far as the high schools go. A little bit less spot-on in the middle schools, but a lot of that's because of some of the growth that's already starting to come up, and then elementaries are certainly, we have a lot of transfers, still have a lot of transfers, and so, being able to chase those and herd those kittens, not cats, but herd those kittens, is a pretty daunting task for our constituent services office. They've done a great job at the secondary level, it's the elementary level, to where you have a lot of other residences used, enrollments, et cetera, along with transfers as well. So I do think that we're capable internally, and then obviously using PASA to come back here and back up, was able to populate our schools fairly well. And again, we go back to two years ago when we did that board, it was a big statement made, was we had to do some things administratively internally before we just go and start asking for schools to be built. So we'll continue to do that, and keep our eye on this data at the same time. Another thing, Stacey, that we didn't really talk about was Hubbard Middle School. And we talked about this earlier on the phone, but certainly Hubbard could factor into receiving some more students if we were to make a decision to go a different direction at HOG, other than a middle school programming. So when you start talking about the conditions of your facilities, and the usage of your facilities, the capacity, Hubbard could get some TLC in the future as well, if it does fit into the reallocation of some of the population of our students.
I believe we could say that this is not really a surprise, because we know as far as the city is concerned, we're seeing the growth going west, southwest. So we thank you for at least enlightening us, and presenting us with the data that we can all use as far as making decisions. And, what, do you not have any other comments? All right.
Question for Dr. Crawford. So obviously, no one likes changing attendance zones, at the same time, no one likes really borrowing more money to build new schools. There's significant improvement with capacity utilization, the last time attendance zones were adjusted, in the same way that there was a whole boatload of disclaimers about no one's recommending building a new school, also not recommending changing attendance zones, but do you think there's, what do you think is possible in terms of attendance zone changes that address some of these capacity issues outside of building new schools?
I think we gave it our best shot this last time, depending upon some of these hotspots and how they're going, I don't see there's any, there's not a whole lot of flexibility in there. We were charged by a couple of board members, and their preferences, on using big streets. That was also a goal that we were trying to use, that, you know, because of the desegregation or how we had a lot of these bubbles and pockets and fingers and arms everywhere, if we were going to go embark upon this, could we use some of these big streets, or big roads? And we accomplished that. I think whenever we start talking about going back and redrawing, you're going to start talking about getting back to some of those old ways, where we carve out certain neighborhoods as well. So we gave it a good shot this last time. I do think there's probably some manipulation that can happen easier on the east side than on the west side, per your data that you're receiving here. And you've got to also remember, just because they draw these zones on there and these heat maps out, it doesn't mean that all the density is equally distributed throughout. So what might look balanced as far as the map goes, there's some imbalance within those zones of heavily populated areas, and then you start talking about moving them to a different school, that's not maybe quote-unquote their neighborhood school, would be some concern that I would have, especially in the development that they're talking about off of Cumberland in the future. You know, when that happens, we don't know, but I can't see kids that aren't on Cumberland, kids that aren't in Holly Tree or the Crossing, or right there around Jack, what's that called?
Cumberland Gap.
Cumberland Gap, not going to Jack Elementary. So I think that that would propel us to have to consider something out further west that would relieve that, as opposed to sending students that are just right across Old Jacksonville somewhere else. So I do think we've got some work we can do as far as elementaries go on the east side, but there might be some programmatic shifts that can repopulate those schools as well, some type of magnet or academies that we've even talked about at the board level. So to answer your question, it will not be as simple as what was done last time, and it was not simple. You can ask John Landis back there. It will certainly be a lot more difficult for us to be able to carve out some stuff to give us some headroom.
Can we have a board bill?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Dr. Crawford and Ms. Tasha.
Yeah, we've been talking about some of the items that we have inside this budget since, I don't know, February, March, when the legislature was meeting, and we're really concerned that some of the complexities that were coming out of the eighty-sixth legislature may have had us meeting a lot more during the summer, with special call meetings, et cetera, but it just doesn't feel that we've needed those. So we're here today to present to you some opportunities for y'all to consider, and maybe an action item or two here in the back end, in regard to compensation of staff and the formulation of this year's budget, which will culminate at the regular meeting here on the first day of school, August the nineteenth. It's going to be a long day, be a fun day. And so, we're here to talk about today the budget update. Tasha's here at the table for her presentation, along with some Q and A from the board. Ms. Bjork.
Okay, this is going to be the first full budget presentation, because I've had just bits and pieces, but now we have the full picture. So this will be a more detailed presentation. I'll go through a high-level presentation with a PowerPoint, and then the detail is in your packets, and y'all can just let me know what you want to get into in that. So the first slide is on our revenue sources, and there was a shift to more state revenue, because they increased the basic allotment about seven hundred and eighty-five dollars for our district. It only, it went up like four or five percent, though. We're at thirty-nine percent state, and around fifty-nine percent local. So there was a shift, but not a large one. As far as the state revenue, they did increase the funding formula, but at the same time, they increased our local share to current values. In the past, we've had like a one-year lag. And there's a paper at your desk that was loose, and this illustrates how the property value lag has occurred in the past, and what is happening in the current year. And this is a required disclosure that I have to show y'all for first reading. I think it'll go away next year, because they're converting the current values, but in the past, you can see that they've used the prior year values, and so when the values go up, if you look at the bottom row, our state aid would go down a corresponding amount, not like eighty-six percent of it, or something. So you can tell, like, if we had stayed with the way it was before the new House Bill Three, our current values would have caused a decrease of around four million in state aid. So they, but they changed it to where we're at current values, and so we won't really know that until January. So that's always just an estimation on our part. So I tried the best I could, just based on history, to estimate what our current values would be in January, February, when we received them. So our state revenue is increasing approximately eleven point seven million. However, the property taxes are going down from a dollar four to ninety-seven cents, and that's a decrease of around one point eight million to us.
That's on the M and O side?
Right. The debt service side's the same. Now, our values went up four point four percent, so that helps some, but the decrease, it's a net decrease of around one point eight million dollars. And a penny to us is now around eight hundred and eighty thousand. Because we are proposing raises for all the staff of around six million dollars, we will have the TRS on behalf that the state puts in for us, that's going to increase revenue and expense around seven hundred and fifty thousand. So that's just a wash, but it still increases the budget. And then our interest income has gone up, we have a little bit of a decrease in charge, so our other revenues, a net increase of about point nine, almost one million dollars. So our total proposed revenue increases around ten point eight million. Now, on the use of funds, I've split it into payroll and benefits, instruction, and then departmental. So for payroll and benefits, this is where we have the most, we've spent the most, and that is a raise for employees and some salary scale adjustments that we did, that I'll be presenting in a few minutes for approval. We are adding a director of safety and security, we have added a couple of instructional specialists for early literacy, and then some assistant principal interns at the elementary, due to some campuses going over six hundred and fifty. And special ed staffing, increase the number of pre-K classrooms, regular pre-K, and then we have just other that I've listed. So it's around nine point one million for salary and positions. And I have details in the packet on what each item is. For instruction and instructional support, we budgeted about half a million for expansion of Rose City Summer Camps, we budgeted band uniform replacement for the high schools, and then we have some money set aside for special projects and curriculum needs, and that's around one point five million. Departmental, not really much change there, just a small increase in the audit contract, our percentage on the tax assessment and collection fee went up, and then when our tax revenues go up, the three-cent preventive maintenance fund increases, and altogether, that was around a hundred and sixty-six thousand. So we have a balanced budget, ten point eight million in expenditures also. Now, if you would like to, I'll just go over in your packets, it's on page seven in the packets.
Tasha, just pause real quick, just, we talked about the preventative maintenance fund. We always want to make sure that we convey to our community that, back in the early two thousands, this board, along with some community members, devised the plan that three cents of our tax rate every year be dedicated toward preventative maintenance of our facilities. When we embarked upon this renovation and rejuvenation of our facilities, that was how we're going to take care of it, and it's been our belief that, and we've had very good success with this, that we've been able to take care of our HVAC replacements on schedules, the roofs, the paint, along with parking lots, did I leave anything out, Mr. Loper? Okay? Et cetera, are being taken care of in our regular budget, very similar to what the city has done, and with a lot of their not taking on debt. And obviously, schools are a little bit different because of the square footage, et cetera, but as far as the maintenance of that, just want to make sure we convey that again, that point oh-three is something that we are pretty much a vanguard in doing as a school system. There are other school systems that do it, but we take pride that we've been able to sustain that for the last fifteen-plus years. Thank you.
Okay, and on the page seven of the packet, what he was just talking about, down there towards the bottom, the transfer to preventive maintenance, three cents is around two and a half million dollars for next year, so that will go in for the projects that we have for next year. So this is just a big breakdown of our salary and benefits, that's around a hundred and thirty-three point six. The campus individual budgets are around one point seven, and then our operating, which includes utilities and tax collection, all that's around twenty-five million. So our total budget will be around one hundred and sixty-three million for general fund next year.
Tasha, on that page, did we project for any increase in student enrollment?
I did maybe thirty or forty is all.
All right.
Pretty flat, because it hasn't been going up a lot.
Okay.
I knew we would have some because of pre-K.
Yes.
But we only, technically, we've only added like four classes, so, altogether.
Thank you.
And the next page just is a summary of what we spend in extra pay or overtime, and that's where I have the Rose City Summer Camp expansion in there, the half a million The next page is the campus budgets, just by school, and it's based on a per student.
Excuse me, Tasha, how much do teachers make per day?
It's, I'm going to let Ron do it. Eighty-five if they're certified, seventy-five if, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
We did have to increase the sub-budget, because we've had an increase in that, and that's detailed more at the back. And then the next few pages are just our operating budgets. It's a lot of detail, but I've just put it here to, so you can look at it and see if you have any questions. The next page is just our revenue detail, and it shows you what all our sources are, and you can see, like, interest income is a four hundred thousand dollar increase for this next year. The next page is our tax levy, so we had a four point four percent increase, we estimate a ninety-nine and a half percent collection rate, and with our tax rate going down in M and O, seven cents. The last page is the one that shows the dollar amounts of each change that I discussed. The last page is the one that shows the dollar amounts of each change that I discussed. So if you look at the middle, the payroll and benefits, that tells you what each position or whatever cost that I had on the PowerPoint. Like increase in number of pre-K classrooms, I estimate around four hundred thousand. That's just an example. The raise is six million. TRS and TRS on behalf is around nine seventy-five. TRS is what we pay in. And TRS on behalf is what the state pays in. And then our increase in our health insurance guarantee is around four hundred and fifty thousand. Those are kind of the big items. And then the, I wanted to explain something on the instruction and instructional support. There's a placeholder there of eight hundred and fifty-four thousand for special projects. And what that is, when the state gave us the increase in money, we have to spend a certain portion of that on special programs like, well, state comp ed, special ed, career and tech. Well, they raised the allotment and we still have to say, spend that same percentage. So our, what we have to spend on those programs is going to increase. But I'm not sure how much on, on especially state comp ed. And so this money will be used more than likely for instructional programs or something like that that benefit the economically disadvantaged.
And talk to the board about why you're unsure at this point. About, if, there's just a lot of ambiguity
Right.
in what's come out of House Bill Three, about rules and-
Well, and we really don't know on state comp ed, those census blocks and all that.
Census blocks, that's exactly right. So TEA Austin is still doing a lot of interpretation, even though budgets have been adopted in districts that are July one. We're a September one district, obviously, that's what y'all are working on. So going into this first shot of the House Bill Three coming out of the legislature, it is a, it's pretty tough because we're having to do a lot of guestimating on exactly what is. We've been very conservative and very tight over the last fifteen years because of how the, the property values, previous year values had been set. Plus, there wasn't a whole lot of formulaic change inside of the, the, the funding formulas. You saw a big shift this year in that. And that's one reason we're having to kind of be a little bit more protective, I guess, as far as the interpretations go on state comp ed.
Well, and like, for instance, in state comp ed, I estimate we'll receive around nineteen million.
How much?
Nineteen million.
All right.
Now, in the past, we had to spend fifty-two percent of that. And then the rest can just go toward anything else. But next, for next year, they, this budget, they've increased it to fifty-five percent. So not only did we get about seven million more, but we have to spend more, like fifty-five percent of it. Now, we have positions that we have in that that have, when they get their raises, that'll help. But whatever I had left after we did our budget, I put in this placeholder. For anything, like when we get the actual amount we know we have to spend, I've got it here so we can do that.
And that's outside of Rose City Summer Camp?
Right.
Yeah, so-
Now, Rose City Summer Camp will go into state comp ed.
So a chunk of that half a million that you, that you talked about-
Well, the half millions aside from this, but the half million
Right, right.
will go into state comp ed.
So the big commitment that we're making on the expansion of that is, Mentoring Alliance asked for another location to be opened up next year, which was Hubbard. We said you can't open Hubbard without opening one at Bolter. So the Bolter site's going to, going to be really special for us, being able to make that work, a little bit different than the other three sites. But there's going to be a large commitment there from Mentoring Alliance and us to do that. So those dollars being used, appreciate Matt Schaefer, our local rep, and being able to, to ensure that that was going to be used in the budget, that was going to be appropriate. So pretty big, pretty big deal.
Let me ask this time, if any board members, if you have any questions, if you would just go ahead and ask those.
Of the eight fifty-four in special projects, how much of that is comp ed versus specialized? You mentioned several other programs. Is it mostly comp ed?
I think we're good on special ed. There's going to be some bilingual because they increased that allotment.
So mostly comp ed?
And we're pretty good on CTE. We may have a little more we have to spend, but we're usually okay. So once we built that center up there, we're pretty good. We, we get our spending area.
Talk about the Career Technology Center?
Mm-hmm.
That center up there on the hill?
Yeah. Once we built that, that really helped us meet that allotment. But we did get more for that, too.
I would like to ask, Tasha, about our substitute teacher pay. When was the last time substitute, substitute teachers received an increase?
I would say, let's see, it was probably four years ago when we went to the eighty-five. It used to be lower.
I do remember.
Mm-hmm.
I hope, I just hope we'll keep them in mind in the near future. Okay. All right. Any other question, board members? Dr. Crawford, any closing remarks or you have any questions?
Yeah, one more question. So there's two items related to early literacy here, both stipends and then an increase in specialists. Can you or Dr. Hanson talk through that expense and how those folks or those dollars would be used?
I've got it.
Okay.
I'll answer it.
Yep.
So the early literacy is on Silt. We, we redesigned what our department heads look like, K through twelve. So, you know, instead of being the perceived party planner for who's going to, who's going to plan for the cake, birthday cake within the department, it's, they're instructionally based. Silt stands for Campus Instructional Leadership Team. Specifically in the elementary schools, we have a group, it's called Silt Plus. Silt Plus are the folks that are actually going through the letters opportunities that we're providing, that rigorous professional development that's got a heavy foundation in phonics that we've partnered with, with Voyager and the, and CLI, Children's Learning Institute from the University of Texas at Houston. So the funding that is actually coming out of there. We also increased the, the stipends for our campus instructional leadership team members on each campus. At the high school level, the department heads, the silts there were receiving three thousand dollars per year. In order to do that, at the middle school level, I believe they were receiving-
Fifteen hundred.
How much?
Fifteen hundred.
They were receiving fifteen.
At middle school.
Did we increase that or they were, they were already receiving that?
That's what they received.
That's what they were receiving. At the elementary level, they were, they were receiving three hundred dollars a year. And so we went back in and redesigned it with this money to redesign what the silt looks like,
All right.
along with some enhancements of as far as the silt membership goes. So if you're on the silt team, you get a seven hundred and fifty dollar stipend. If you're on silt and you're participating in silt plus, which is, that's our pre-K through three teachers that are going through that, this first round, they will receive another seven hundred and fifty. So if you're silt plus, pre-K through three, you'll receive a fifteen hundred dollar stipend. So that's where that is designated. As far as the specialist goes, we did not replace the Director of Pre-K Through Three Early Literacy, but we hired two folks that have a lot of experience and success in early literacy as well. One was internal, one was external that we hired as well. So those are the two positions.
Okay. Any other questions before we go into our action items? Is there anything else, Tasha, you think we should know?
No, not until we get to the raise part.
All right. Thank you very much. Roman numeral four, action items. A, consider approval of board meeting date for purpose of adopting budget and proposed tax rate.
Page sixteen of your packet. We actually have the dates that are listed for you. Let me turn over there so that I can state that. Administration recommends the board meeting date for the purpose of adopting the budget and proposed tax rate be set for August nineteenth, twenty nineteen. And is also recommended that the proposed tax rate of one dollar thirty-three and a half cents, is that how you say it, Tasha? Be used in the publication notice of public meeting to discuss budget and proposed tax rate. We, we recommend this be approved by the Board of Trustees. That is a, that is indicative of the seven cent compression that we are, are providing the taxpayers here via the legislature. So normally, it would be a dollar forty and a half.
Mm-hmm.
With the compression, it's a dollar thirty-three and a half.
And this will be published tomorrow.
It will be published tomorrow, all right. Is there a motion?
That seven cents is, is directly toward local property taxes?
Yes, sir.
So the public, local public, that, that's where you'll feel the effects of-
Yes.
The recent legislature. That's correct. If folks kept up with the legislative session as much as we all did, well, you understand it's probably not best to call it a tax cut, that you won't be getting a tax in the mail. But you will, you will feel the relief as far as the, the increase in values, et cetera, and how that's applied to the tax rate. That will be, the brakes are being hit on that is a pretty good metaphor for that.
All right. Mr. Harding, for this motion, do we need to make sure we say in words proposed tax rate of one point three three five? All right, so may we have a motion to approve the board's recommendation? And please state this entire recommendation.
All right. On sixteen, the administration recommends, that was the board meeting date. There we go.
No, it's second.
It's in there.
Second sentence.
It is so recommended that the proposed tax rate of one point three three five be used in the publication notice of public meeting to discuss budget and proposed tax rate be approved by the board. Make that into a motion.
End the date.
Yes.
On August nineteenth? On August nineteenth, twenty nineteen.
Okay.
Second that motion.
All right. Moved by Mr. Burckfield and seconded by Reverend Hager that the proposed tax rate of one point three three five be used for a proposed tax rate and the meeting date set for August nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposers? The ayes have it and the motion carries. Thank you. Roman numeral four B, consider approval of proposed budget and expenditures for state compensatory funds.
Mm-hmm. Traditionally and annually, this comes in front of the board of our plan of where we actually spend state comp ed funds. You have a menu there of where we'll spend those. Everything from the RISE, early grad school, JJAP tuition, Tyler ISD DAP. There's also some positions that are listed in here that are allocated throughout the district. ESL Intervention Specialist, Master Teachers at the elementary campuses, Student Services Off, Student Service Officers out of Constituent Services are also funded out of this, along with some SSI support and targeted instructional classes at the high school.
Any questions?
What are, how the, the other innovative campus initiatives? How are those determined?
Usually, it's software that they-
Any other questions? Then may I have a motion to approve the proposed budget and its expenditures for state compensatory funds?
So moved?
Second.
Second?
Moved by, did I hear two seconds? Moved by Reverend Fritz Hager and seconded by Dr. Trish Nations that we approve the proposed budget for stopping state comp ed funds for this academic year. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposers? Then ayes have it and the motion carries. Thank you, Tasha. Moving right along with Ms. Tasha. Roman numeral four C, employee health insurance rate increase. Dr. Crawford and Tasha.
I'll introduce this and you can talk about it. We do champion the, the, the opportunities that we provide our staff and our employees of those that participate in our self-funding program here for healthcare. There's no doubt that is a, it is a nice perk that we provide for our, for our staff. Just like everyone else, we, healthcare is getting more and more expensive. While certainly, we are not asking what, for the increase that the state of Texas had as far as the TRS care goes and how, how much of an increase that they did. But we are asking for a five cent, five percent increase in regard to increasing the employee contribution on that as well.
All right, board members, any questions or comments?
Y'all need to look at page twenty-one.
Yes, we're looking.
To see what the differences are.
I am looking.
It's got the school board member health insurance added to it.
Yeah.
Well, let me ask a question, Tasha. I see the increase. And my question would be, the increases that we're proposing for salaries, would that make at least help a little bit?
Yes, yes. But the first column is the state plan.
State, yes.
And so if you compare that to the third column, the difference is in that next to last column between what ours is and the state premium.
When we meet with new teachers, Dr. Crawford, do we share with them what a benefit it is to be a part of our plan?
Until we're blue in the face.
They, they really ought to pay attention to that.
I think you look at the very far right column as well and the different levels of, of insurance that we provide and what the actual percentage above Tyler ISD is in regard to what's comparable. So I think we're the only school system from the tip of Houston, I mean, the tip of Houston, I'm talking about Willis and north, all the way over to Shreveport, to Little Rock, to Tulsa, to Mesquite, and then back down towards Houston
Is that right?
that are self-funded, I think.
There are not very many.
I think. I'm just going to put a-
Waco is.
I didn't include them. I, Mesquite's the, is, is far, who? Brenham? They're outside of forty-five. So that little triangle or that little area that I just gave you, it's a pretty good benefit and a good recruiting tool in regard to attracting folks to come here because if they choose to come here to Tyler ISD and they're on the Plan B, which a lot of our folks are, your family gets a hundred and fifty-seven percent differential on that, a hundred and eighty-eight percent employee only. So yes, ma'am, we promote this and continue to promote it.
Questions or comments? May I have a motion to approve the premium increase for plans A, B, and HD?
So move?
Second.
Moved by Dr. Nations and seconded by Mr. Sterling that we approve the employee premium rate increase. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposers? Then ayes have it and the motion carries. Approval of compensation structure for two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and twenty.
Page twenty-three in the packet gives a summary of the changes. And we've discussed those with the levels on the teachers, one to five, twenty-five hundred, six to twenty-four thousand and above twenty-three thousand, four percent for admin and professionals, and six percent for clerical manual trades. One other thing we did, because we've not done it in three or four years, is we increased the bottom and the top and the midpoint of the pay ranges. So on administrative and professional, we went up two percent. And on the annualized hourly and manual trades, four percent. And if you turn the page, the first page is our salary range for our teachers. And we decided to raise the minimum to forty-four thousand two fifty from forty-two thousand. We're trying to work up to that fifty for next year. So we raised it two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for beginning teacher.
Does this make us the top as far as competitive salaries in East Texas?
There's one above us right now.
So far.
We've been looking, but they haven't all come out with it yet. They won't tell us.
They're waiting on us to make a decision.
They're waiting on y'all to make a decision.
But there is one that's above us. Okay. All right. So then, if you go on the, the next few pages, the administrative, professional, what this is, it's based on the number of days. And you can look out to the side if you know your pay grade and see what kind of raise you're going to get.
Let, let me go back, Tasha, pause.
Okay.
So that question was asked, there's one above us. Are they on the state's healthcare plan?
Yeah.
They are? They're not on the Tyler ISD self-funded plan? So if you're an employee, if you're, if you're an employee, if you're an employee there, and let's say you're on Plan B like a lot of us are, to where it's our, the employee and family, that means that at the end of the year, that you'd be paying twelve thousand six hundred more dollars in healthcare per year.
Say that one more time, Tasha.
Twelve thousand six hundred more dollars. Reverend Mason, that's a thousand dollars a month and it's coming out of your back- a month and it's coming out of your back pocket to pay for healthcare compared to what you would have to pay here in Tyler ISD.
Corey, please quote that.
Okay, there you go. Okay, good. Sorry, Tasha.
Okay, that's okay. So if you just skip through the admin, professional, on the clerical, on page twenty-eight, you can see what the raise is per hour in the top table. So we raised, if you're on pay grade one, you get seventy-five cents an hour, but we also raised the minimum to nine ninety-seven per hour. We raised that four percent. And then the manual trades are on page thirty-one, and it's, their minimum was raised to nine fifty-five. Pay grade one will get seventy-two cents and so on. And then we have a pay table for bus drivers on page thirty-four. They'll get a dollar twenty-four per hour increase, and the minimum was raised from sixteen to sixteen sixty-four. And then our last one, our mechanics. The minimum-
You go ahead.
Go ahead. The minimum was raised to eighteen seventy-two, a dollar thirty-four an hour increase.
I think both of those are pretty competitive in regard to ours, where we're having to compete at, right, Tasha?
Yes.
But everybody is struggling to, because of the economy. There's a lot of folks that are, that are CDL certified that are driving trucks for a living right now, so.
Any questions?
Glad to see we're competitive. Any comments, board members or questions? Will entertain-
I'm sorry, Reverend Mason, sorry to interrupt. We will, over the next year, also be looking at elementary principal salaries, along with assistant principal salaries as well, because we conduct market analysis fairly routinely. Our principals, high school principals and middle school principals are above market on average, and our elementary schools are a little bit lower than that. They also work less days, but we're also going to probably bump them back up to two twenty-six next year as, as fluid as, as the hiring season is, and so we'll be bringing something back to you for next year's budget.
I'm sure happy to hear you make the elementary principal marketable. Alright. I will entertain a motion at this time to approve the compensation structures for two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and twenty.
I so moved.
I'll second.
Moved by Mrs. Sterling and seconded by Dr. Nations that we approve the compensation structure. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposers? The ayes have it and the motion carries. Alright, Tasha, you go. Yeah, I'm presenting. Okay. Roman numeral four E, we're being asked to endorse Tasby Board of Director for Region Seven. We have before us two candidates, Ted Beard from Longview ISD, Carolyn Booker fro, from Westwood ISD. Is there a recommendation?
I move that we recommend Ted Beard as, for the board.
Alright. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Alright. All in favor, say aye? Oh, excuse me.
Can we have some discussion?
Certainly.
Do we, what if we don't know some of these people? I mean-
I can say, and probably several of us, probably those who've gone through the Tasby training, that they're very well aware of Ted Beard, who has been very active in Tasby and very strong board member in Longview ISD. Anything you want to add?
No, correct. Worked with him through the delegate assembly the last few years, and also through leadership Tasby. I don't know Ms. Booker at all.
I don't either. Is anyone else? Go ahead, any other questions?
No, I just don't really know either one of them, so it's hard for me to put, to vote on somebody I don't know at all. So those of you that know-
Yes.
Feel free to vote. I don't know either one of them.
Alright. The motion has, is before us to recommend Ted Beard, to select him to serve on the Region Seven Board of Directors. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposers? Any abstentions? Alright, we have four, four, and one abstention. Any opposers? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, we're going into a continuous improvement at this time. Dr. Crawford?
Absolutely. We're proud to have Mr. Brown come up to the podium. We had to split up on our, on our schedule. We had to split up some of our updates because of, of length, not so much with them, but it's the other business of the board. So we've asked all of our presenters to condense what they've been doing, have a little bit of brevity, and give the highlights as well, and that should pertain also to your athletics and your fine arts updates in the future as well. So more or less a presentation, then y'all can ask questions, and then you can get your update and feel good about it. Mr. Brown?
Vice President, Reverend Mason, board members, Dr. Crawford, I will go through this. We're gonna start the presentation with the video presentation, and there'll be students, administrators, and teachers in this. They'll have far more important things to share than I will, but if we could cue the video.
We had fifteen schools competing, and we had to split into two districts, and so we have Area One and we have Area Two. Elementary UIL started three years ago, and at that point, we had seven schools competing. Last year, it grew, and we had fifteen schools competing, and we had to split into two districts, and so we have Area One and we have Area Two. This year, we had sixteen schools competing.
I was competing in third grade storytelling. Storytelling is like one of my hobbies.
So today I had the pleasure of judging third grade storytelling. Storytelling is a competition in which students have to hear a story and then recite the events as best as possible and be as engaging with an audience as possible.
The reason we wanted to have Elementary UIL is to give our students a little extra, to give them an extracurricular event and something to work towards and to build that spirit of competition, that they could be really proud when they, when they compete, and they can learn that if you work really hard at something, you can get a positive result.
A lot of these students have never competed in different sports, so they get the, the, I guess, the athletic side of things where they get to compete against other students, but it may not be on the basketball court or the football field, things like that. So a lot of them get to see the competitive nature of different activities through UIL.
I want to participate in UIL so that I can get a scholarship into a good college and I can be successful later on in life.
UIL is one of my favorite days of the year, because I can, I'm around all my friends and maybe even can win some awards.
In academic meets, it gives you exposure to other schools and to judges to show off what you're good at.
There, it's, it's a lot of work that goes into it, to make it exactly how you want it be. And it's never gonna be perfect, but you can get it closer the more work you do.
The highlight of the meet is seeing the kids' faces as they compete. They're excited, they're, they're glad to be here, and they get to see other kids from other schools, and that's really cool, too, that they get to see that there are other kids that are doing the same things that they are.
They understand that idea of that holistic student who also has those social skills that are so important, but really capitalizing on every opportunity to advance themselves academically. UIL provides a wonderful outlet for our kids to get scholarships and provides them opportunities to come to places like TJC, to see colleges, to see what it's like, to move to the next level. So it's a wonderful opportunity, and it's neat to see how much they care about really doing the best they can academically.
My passion for debate has grown so much. I've really considered majoring in something along the lines of communications in college, because I've just really learned that I love the subject, and I really think anybody can fall in love with debate. Really, there's something for everyone.
I'm involved in mental math, which is, they give you the problem on the test and you do it all in your head. You cannot correct your answers. If you skip a question, you get it wrong. If you write it wrong, you get it wrong. It's a very high stakes test. You only have ten minutes to answer as much as you can.
Well, today I'm computing numbers since, you know, mental math, most of that. You have nineteen times seventy-five, square root of three, thirty-eight thousand, six hundred fifty-six, stuff like that. It's really big numbers that you just have to go through. You can't write anything down, everything is just mentally.
I was just really grateful that I experienced UIL for all four years of my high school career. I feel like the skills that I gained from UIL in particular are what helped me the most in school, like aside from just classes, you know, the, the life skills that I learned in UIL.
I feel like it makes me more confident to like speak in front of people. In prose, you have your book, and then you're like in a group of people that you like you've never even seen, and you're just like performing for them.
Debate especially is something where you have to be able to see something that someone else hasn't come up with a response right off the bat. So being able to think very quickly on your feet, a lot faster than you would have had to develop that skill is something that's extremely important for anything that comes at you in life, whether it's social situations, or like a job interview, or emotional interview, things where you have to be able to sort of formulate a response very quickly.
Skills USA is different in the fact that it has something for everybody in any pathway. The students who participate in Skills USA, be it in criminal justice, or culinary arts, or audiovisual, or cosmetology, they get more specialized training in order to prepare them for the competitions.
I'm going to be attending college to learn about computer science is my intended major right now. So I would like to continue to work with computers and programming and stuff in the future, and I'd like to, I'd like that to be my career going forwards.
Aside from the technical skills, it also helps them to prepare them with their soft skills, interviewing, leadership skills. They have to prepare a resume. They have to go through an interview, an interview process. And throughout the scope of their competing, they also have to be interviewed by judges. So it helps with those soft skills that they're gonna need after they graduate and they go to work in their chosen career.
And as I mentioned previously, our teachers and our students can do a far better job at expressing the significance and importance of competitive academics. I do have some information to share with you on the PowerPoint. Just going through some of the organizations that they compete in. Our, the events, I won't read through these, but it does graduate, it's progressive as students move from elementary to middle school and then to high school. These ten events we have students competing in, in the district, and these are localized through two different local meets that are held. And the ones that we held this past year, we had three hundred and forty-nine, excuse me, two hundred and seventy, two hundred and fifty-one, on the wrong one, hold on, I'm getting off track here. Two hundred and seventy-five students that competed in the District One, the Area One meet. Owens Elementary placed first, then Caldwell second, and Birdwell third. Simultaneously, on the same date, and this was in February, we had two hundred and fifty-one students competing. First place was awarded to Rice Elementary students. Jack Elementary second, Griffin Elementary third. And then the top students from each of these area meets advanced to a citywide meet, which was held at the Current Technology Center in March. We had three hundred and forty-nine students competing. The overall city championship, if you would call it that, went to Owens Elementary School, followed by Caldwell Elementary School, and then Rice Elementary. As you can see, the several hundred students that competed at that level. Then when you progress to the middle school UIL events, the number goes from ten to eighteen, so we adds, we keep some things, and then we begin to add more specialty events. UIL Middle School Meet was held at Belter Middle School in February, a hundred and forty-one students competing. First place went to Moore Middle School, followed by Hubbard Middle School, and then Belter Middle School. And that, that is the final meet. There's not an advancement at elementary or middle school beyond just the local contest. Then you can see you go from eighteen, now you're, you add the additional, and you go to twenty-two. High School UIL academic events that are listed. We had a hundred and fourteen total students competing this past year that began at the district level, and students that placed in the top two advanced. We, we had two students this past year that, that actually competed and won medals. I think you saw both of them in the video. One of them decided to wear her medals, Lizzie did, Lizzie Tucker. We had third state, third in state in ready writing, Jackson Nolan, and then fifth in state in prose interpretation, Lizzie Tucker. State medalists in the current technical student organizations, you saw some instructors talking about that. We had a first in state in Technology Student Association Scale Model of Civil Structure, that was Sean Offenberger. We had a first Technical Student Association in Text-Based Interactive Program, Spencer Webb, and then a Skills USA gold medal, Salon Project, Riley Moore. And then we had a group of students that finished third in US, Skills USA in CSI Technical Testing, third in Building Search, and then a fourth place in TSA Pencil Wood Turning. So that's some of the superlatives of the students as they competed throughout the year. And at this time, if there are any questions?
Board members, do you have any questions?
No.
Comments?
Very good, thank you.
Good job, Mr. Brown. Appreciate you. Dedicated service.
Make sure you talk to Coach Priest, he used to do. Go back and review the tape. Really good.
Okay. Roman numeral five, safety and security update. Dr. Crawford and Dr. Sanchez.
Oh, appreciate it. Gave him my degrees. Mr. Sanchez, our Assistant Superintendent of Schools that currently has safety and security on his side of the org chart, gonna give you an update. This is heavy in statute that we're working on, being in compliance with, and I think you'll find out that it's not just us that are having to play catch-up after legislative session, but some of the organizations that the statute says must be doing stuff are playing catch-up as well. Mr. Sanchez?
Well, originally I was gonna say good morning, but after looking at my clock, I realized we've already gone into the afternoon. So good afternoon, Reverend Mason.
Good afternoon, sir.
Board members, Dr. Crawford, appreciate the opportunity to present in length, if you will, the latest legislative update on safety and security. As you know, we're gonna go through this very quickly-
I see him looking at you.
Yeah, I see that already. He was already looking at you before I got up here. You all received the PowerPoint, so I'm just gonna highlight a few areas. And part of the legislative update has asked us to make sure that we include our substitute teachers when we talk about safety and security and them understanding and knowing what they need to do. On the next page, House Bill eighteen and nineteen, this, this one right here is gonna be a big component for us this year. As we focus on the mental health of what's happening with kids in schools, we're happy to report that a lot of the things that they've asked, the legislative has asked us to do, we're already doing. But some of the other things that you'll need to be aware of as a board is, all staff members will have to go through sex trafficking training, as well as sexual abuse and the identification of that, which includes the board. Also-
Have to go through what?
Sex trafficking training and identification of that.
Alright.
Abuse, besides just child abuse, we have to go to the child abuse, but now there's us, sexual abuse that we'll have to go through as well and being able to identify that.
Those are issues.
So congratulations on that. I know you all are really excited. With the increase of pay that you all received this year, they've added those things to you.
Big increase.
We'll also, we're also really excited to know that this coming year, we will have LPCs on our campuses at the high school, at the middle school levels, level two days a week, to help our students who seem to struggle with some mental issues, and so we're really excited that even though this has just come out, we've, we've been in the works of getting this done already.
Grant funded?
Grant funded.
Yes.
The next page is House Bill four ninety-six. This is a Stop the Bleeding. Again, excited that we've all gone through the Stop the Bleeding training, including CPR training. It's two weeks ago, the cabinet level, we all did our Stop the Bleeding training, we did all our CPR training. Dr. Crawford, I was the guinea pig for Dr. Crawford on Stop the Bleeding.
On the tourniquet.
The tourni-
On the tourniquet.
On the tourniquet. And he didn't stop turning the tourniquet on my arm. I'm just happy to be here today.
You can send it back for more training.
Okay. Next page is House Bill eleven forty-three, which was an interesting one where the ISDs cannot regulate the manner in which handguns or firearms are stored in vehicles, which I think was a very interesting one that, as long as they're out of mind, out of sight, basically, is what they're saying, that an ISD cannot regulate it. Now, we're gonna get into some of that stuff in just a second. Next page that I'm turning to is our, provides an opportunity for ISDs to have an MOU with local enforcement, very, very- Very, very fortunate that the board has decided a long time ago, and you all continue to provide the resources where we have our own police department, and so we don't have to do an MOU. Also, we're all in, going through the, the planning stages and looking at companies who can provide us some additional support on an active shooter response. We've met with several different people, companies already, vendors, some of technology that we already have that might, we might enhance in being able to provide a plan on an active shooter response system so that we ensure that all kids are safe, including parents, teachers, administrators, and board members. Reverend Fritz, did you have something to go?
Also, talks about students that commit harassment against school district officials, their opportunity to go to DAUP program. We already have that in place, so we know that the board is pretty clear about one kid is not going to stop 22 or 28 other kids from learning, and we're really, really clear about that, and we're going to hold our teachers, principals, and students and parents responsible to make sure that happens. Next page is on reporting the out-of-school suspension. Previously, it was kind of a soft report. Now it's going to be a hard report on the number of out-of-school suspensions, and we'll also have to identify what subgroup or what subcategory each of the students are coming from, and so we'll be mind, need to be mindful of that as we move forward. Also, we're going to have to have, it prohibits school districts from placing students in out-of-school suspension when it comes to homeless schools, homeless students. So they've changed some of the, some of the rules around students that are identified as homeless and what we can and cannot do in the event that they disturb the educational environment. But again, we're really, really clear of our expectation from our board about a kid stopping other kids from learning. We're really, really clear about that.
It's OSS. There are other disciplinary opportunities there for somebody that behave well.
Also, the transition plan from going from DAP back to the, back to the schools, we already have a plan for that. Next page, it talks about what police officers can and cannot do on campuses. This Senate bill provi, indicates that they don't want police officers to do routine administrative duties. And there's even some language in there where it talks about they don't want police officers building relationships with students. And so we, we know that the key to safe and civil schools and safe environment is, is a level of building relationships with students, whether you're a police officer, a student, a teacher, a clerk. So we're going to be really mindful of that, but we also understand the value of building relationships. We have four tactical officers, two at each campus. They know what their charge is when it comes to ensuring that schools are safe, and so as we've hired them and with the approval of you all, we appreciate that, they play different roles, if you will, in that.
So these officers are visible around the campus and not in an office?
That is-
All of our school security.
Absolutely. And appreciate Chief being here this morning. As we've worked through this, I think that our police officers possibly in the past have understood their role to be different than what it is today, and we appreciate Chief Brown supporting the fact that we want to see our police officers visible amongst where the kids are and where they perceive there could be some problems.
We appreciate the, we appreciate the Board of Trustees in backing us in that requirement to being visible, and if they don't want to follow that administrative directive or expectation, they can go work in another school system or another law enforcement agency. Is that correct, Mr. Sanchez?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And Chief Brown has been very forward with his staff and has made some changes, if you will.
Appropriately.
Okay, the last one, another slide is House Bill 1325. So let me give you a little, hemp and marijuana are used interchangeably, however, they're different. Hemp is a plant, as is marijuana, but hemp is used for oils sometimes that is in jewels, vape, and so that's two different things, and people have a tendency to-
Apparently spelled differently, too.
There's, no, that is how it is legally spelled.
With an H?
With an H. We, it's either could be spelled with an H or a J.
Which one are you speaking of?
So there's hemp, which is a plant, which is a heavier plant.
Right.
Then there's marijuana, which is a lighter plant that is, we normally refer to, some people think hemp is marijuana, but it's not. They're two different plants. Hemp is a heavier plant, okay? Used with, used to use to make oils.
Ropes.
Ropes, some clothing, some shoes, some fiber, okay?
Palm hats.
Marijuana is spelled with an H or a J depending on what schooling you're from, what part of the world you've come from. It could be a J or an H. We normally know it as a J, okay?
I'm a child of the 60s, so.
It's a J or an H for you?
It was a J. Yeah.
I'm going to reserve the rest of my thoughts.
No more questions.
All right, that's good. Oh, so let me get back to that. We got caught up in, I'm sorry. So legislative has made different rulings on how far we can go in, in the event of a possession of hemp or marijuana. Appreciate, again, Chief Brown meeting with our district attorney, Smith County District Attorney, and we will continue to prosecute kids that are on campuses that have these things. That the legislative is kind of indicated, maybe they're going to kind of hold them harmless, but we're pretty clear that not in Tyler, Texas.
I don't know if it was the legislatures, it was certain DAs in certain counties across the state. I think, so, so you're saying that other DAs in larger counties that are not prosecuting on the street are also going to convey that same thing inside of schools?
Yes, sir.
Oh, no, we're not going to lie there, no.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure Jacob's not going to-
Right. Appreciate, again, Chief Brown meeting with the district, or Smith County District Attorney, and they're going to continue to prosecute. We're going to keep our schools safe and drug-free and alcohol-free.
Is that immediate suspension?
Marijuana is immediate, it's DAP.
Is that, yes.
That is immediate DAP.
Okay.
Immediate.
Full-time.
Whether it's spelled with an H or a J, it's DAP, so says Mr. Jones. Okay? Then last, the police department, proud to, to report that we are fully staffed, 13 police officers and four tactical officers, and might be the first time in how long, Chief?
A while.
A while.
Now, that's great.
Okay? And then, lastly, a group of us went to the Texas School Safety Conference at Corpus, lovely Corpus, if you will, in the summertime, in the summertime. Everywhere, anybody from our tactical officers to Chief Brown, myself, Mr. Jones, even your superintendent attended the safety conference because he wanted to, to make sure everybody understood that from his seat, safety and security is that important, that he's going to attend school safer, safety conference. We had sessions that we went to, broke, breakout sessions where they talked about opportunities through technology to identify where there might be some possible opportunities for people to do harm to our schools, how to deal with mental health issues in our schools. Also had a, John Michael Keys was the father of the, of a plant, Canyon High School was a presenter. There was also opportunities to hear from Love, the You Love, I Love You Foundation, Sandy Hook, people were there, so it was, it was, everybody from the state of Texas was there. Good information, and there was a lot of confirmation that in Tyler, Texas, our board has given us the liberty and the expectation to ensure that our schools are safe, and some of the things they talked about, we're already doing.
So before the school year begins, I assume all of our faculties and staffs on our campuses will be given an update, and they'll know what's expected of them.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have our safe schools that everyone's got to participate in, in, in check off? I'll just add on the legislative session, here's what you're going to be seeing coming out of there. Obviously, Mr. Sanchez already talked about board training, you've got some requirements, and we'll get you trained up on that. Substitutes, the onboarding, you spoke about that as far as how to react during a, some type of crisis in your classroom. That's actually going to be presented to them when they actually get hired, when, every year. So since a substitute is a contract person, they have to go through that process every year, so they'll actually watch a video in regard to that. Plus, threat assessment teams will be assigned to every campus. It's, there's supposed to be a district threat assessment team as far as whenever we do have these issues. Now, that, that's very cloudy right now about what those threat assessment teams are supposed to be doing. TEA and the Texas School Safety Center will tell you the same thing. They're drinking water out of a fire hose right now, trying to interpret all of these different statutes that have come out of the session. So we'll be providing you information as, as it comes along, whenever we get it in regard to what we're doing. But every campus will have a threat assessment team. There'll be a general threat assessment team as well, I believe, is what's required.
The district.
But there's a district our size, or think about a district Dallas's size, having a district threat level assessment team for, in their case, 225 campuses, in our case, 30 campuses, does not make sense. It might make sense in maybe a smaller school system to have one team, but we need to actually have that span of control broken out to where actually those campuses that include the administrators on that campus and parent representation, which is required, will be a, a part of those threat assessment teams. At least that's our interpretation, unless we're told differently once that's rolled out. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Comments or questions, board members?
Just appreciate the diligence on this very important item. It's good to hear of all the places we're ahead of the state in terms of already meeting the requirements before they even set them, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Can you all assure us that we will be informed of any immediate threat, so to speak, before others, so we can at least be aware when these parents start calling us, citizens start calling? Will have some kind of notice before we hear from the news media, if at all possible?
Valid, yes.
Thank you.
We're not going to chase ghosts. We've said that a million times. So the things that are real are real, and the things that are not are not.
Yes.
So yes, ma'am, when there is an imminent thing going on, we will inform our Board of Trustees. Will, will we share that? Depending upon staff and student confidentiality and other issues, absolutely, we'll always be clear of that as well, but yes, ma'am, we will do that when it's a real thing.
All right, thank you. As we move right along, room number six, Tasby update for our policy readings.
It's the first reading, local policies, BBE, BOD, et cetera, et cetera. We'll have this for you at the regular board meeting, is that right, Gina? Okay. And another item of interest, the student code of conduct. We were waiting on one little adjustment, should have been here today for the second reading. We will have it for you on August 19th for y'all to approve of that. In the meantime, we will go off of our former student code of conduct for the first day of school. So we're in good shape on that. So if you have any questions about those policies, please give myself a holler or the appropriate assistant superintendent, if you see something in there and you can decipher, it belongs in curriculum, HR, finance, or just general operations.
Can you assure the Board of Trustees that when a student is disrupting a classroom and is out of control, that that student will be removed and the teachers will not have to deal with that student, and there are actions to follow?
Expectations-
Instead of a student being sent right back to the classroom?
Expectations of our principles are that one student will not disrupt the academic progress or the teaching in that classroom of the 21 or 28 other kids that are in the class. So yes, ma'am, that is our expectation.
You're on top of it, Dr. Crawford. I appreciate that. All right. Room number seven, do we have items we need to take care of in executive session, sir? Do we need to go to executive session for anything?
We will go to executive session, yes, ma'am. We've got some-
Afterward.
-property discussions we need to have, along with some legal stuff, advisement from the attorneys.
All right. So at this time, I'm assuming we'll break into executive session unless there is something else?
You will.
You have anything else, Dr. Crawford?
No, ma'am.
Okay, this moment, we'll break into executive session. I assume there will be action to follow. Is that correct?
No, ma'am, no action.
No action, oh, hallelujah, oh, excuse me, no action to follow. Thank you.